Welcome to the Mid-Ohio Valley Public Forum Video Podcast. This podcast features issues of interest to the Mid-Ohio Valley area, mainly encompassing Wood County, West Virginia, and Washington County, Ohio. Right now with the coronavirus pandemic civic life has changed greatly around our country.
This is an election year and one of the things that has changed because of the coronavirus is that candidates can't campaign the way they normally would. Generally, this time of year candidates would be going door to door and they'd be going to soup in dinners, maybe ice cream socials. They'd be doing meet and greets, shaking hands, kissing babies. They can't do any of that now.
So many of our initial podcasts will be interviews with local candidates. If you're a local candidate and we haven't reached out to you yet, please get in touch with us either through our Facebook page, MOV Public Forum, or by email at movpublicforum@gmail.com.
Today we'll be interviewing Brett Bryngardner. Brett is running for city council for District 4. District 4 is the area of the city that is kind of surrounding the Pink Church, which is actually known as the Church of the Good Shepherd, but everyone calls it the Pink Church. It's a large district, kind of stretching. The boundaries vary, but it kind of stretches from St. Mary's Avenue on the north side, reaching all the way across to south side to the area that runs over there along Badger Lumber. So it's quite a large district. It's also the most economically disadvantaged area of the city. So with that said, Brett, we're glad you could join us this afternoon. Welcome.
Thanks for having me.
Let's dive right in. How do you introduce yourself as a candidate? Do you have an elevator speech? If we were traveling in an elevator and you had only the time between floors to convince me to vote for you, what would you say?
I don't really have a set speech of any kind. I like Parkersburg. I like how it's very, very different than anywhere else I've ever lived. And I think it has a lot of potential. Not having grown up here, I see pockets of things like a depressed area like District 4. They just have a lot of, a lot of future. I don't see it as anything other than an asset. And that might be backward thinking, but that's how it works.
So what is motivating you to run for office? What made you decide to step up and run for city council at this time?
Well, a couple of years ago, I got married to Rachel Ferguson, who was on magistrate court and is a 30-year-or-so employee of the West Virginia Supreme Court, currently as magistrate waters assistant. And I moved to Parkersburg, bought a house in District 4 that was unfinished, not up to code, and my wife and I together have redone the house. We've purchased four more lots adjacent to it that we're going to build on. And I just see a lot of potential in the area. I used to live in Columbus and the short north area used to be a very depressed area in the 70s and 80s. And now it's this fantastic reborn, extremely exciting part of town. While Parkersburg doesn't have the same population, it still has a lot of potential to turn not so nice area into a nice area. And that motivates me, being an entrepreneur, self-employed. I see business opportunity for me and lots of other people.
What do you think is your wow factor? In other words, what would make someone who hears about you and your candidacy think, wow, I'm going to vote for him?
I never really thought of myself as having a wow factor. I'm pretty calm. I think it's more of the entrepreneurial background that I look at. I just, I just don't look at distressed assets like a halfway burned out house as a, anything other than an opportunity to be taken over. I really, I'm sorry, I don't have a word, an answer for wow.
Okay, well, if you're elected, what is the one thing that you'd want to make sure to try and accomplish during your term in office? And also, is there any state, I'm sorry, city code ordinance that you would like to see changed or abolished or created?
Mostly around blight abatement. Parkersburg is unique in a lot of ways, one of which is the depopulation that's happened. There are several hundred structures that are not occupied and never will be. So the ordinance is around streamlining, removing blight properties. There's a little bit of technical issues in how they're bid out to be torn down. I understand how eminent domain works and the necessary legal process to get there. I think there should be a couple of other steps. For example, right now, a house or a building is just bid out to be torn down. I think there should be another layer where a contractor, a salvager, a remodeler could bid to pay the city for the chance to go inside the house and recycle things like moldings and doors and trim and fixtures. In the house that my wife and I have redone, all of our trim and doors and fixtures are all surplus and salvage that we've either bought at Restore or at Mrs. Oldacre's resale shop down on Neil Avenue. So that layer plus as much as possible streamlining, the elimination of dangerous properties, especially ones that aren't boarded up properly, have been set on fire. I think they need to be removed more quickly. They're just, they're dangerous.
How do you feel about compromise?
I'm pretty good at compromise, especially if the people I'm working with have a shared goal. And the only challenge is in agreeing on the path to the goal. If the goals are so far apart that there's nowhere to compromise, then the majority wins. But the problems that, that I look at or that I'm really concerned about, I don't see where there would be lots of room for compromise between me and other people.
Are we paused? So would you say that you play with others? And can you describe some instances where that's been necessary?
Well, I started my first company when I was about 24 years old. My father was self-employed and I sort of went down the same path. I've had four companies. The largest one had 50 employees. The smallest one had one. And when I look back, the interaction I had with my employees, I was always complimented on that I wasn't a normal boss. I, I was always working with them. I didn't have an office. I didn't spend my time golfing or at the country club or out hanging around with other business people or even in the Chamber of Commerce, I was at work. Side by side. I, I've really never had a company that I didn't enjoy working in, which is of course the point of entrepreneurialism is you, you do what you like. So I always got along well with all the employees.
What do you think your worst enemy would say is your worst quality?
If I had an enemy, which I don't know if I do, it's probably that I didn't do what they wanted, when they wanted it, and exactly at the timeframe they wanted. I tend to be more deliberative. I take time to think things through. I've, I've, I've shocked a few business people in the past that I didn't want to use attorneys. I tend to like to write my own agreements and sit down with that other person, negotiate the terms and conditions, write it down, and take care of business. I've never sued anyone. Hopefully, no, no, I never will. So I'd say that's, that's about that.
What do you think is your best quality?
I, I don't, I don't really have a, why, I have actually zero temper. I'm very calm and mild-mannered. Usually when I get, when something is giving at me as a, say, an argument. I don't really like to argue. I'll tend to make a note, think about it for a while, and come back later. Just not an argumentative person. I don't know if that's good in politics or not.
It's infuriating in personal life because my husband's very similar. Sometimes, you know, when I want to argue, he just won't do it.
Yeah, arguing isn't what I would say I would ever do. I would have a discussion. And if there's not going to be an agreement between two people, sometimes just set it aside and move on to what you do agree with.
So political office holders are leaders. How would you describe your leadership style?
I don't look at myself as any kind of a stand-up-in-front kind of leader. Again, it's more deliberative, more working with people, and a lot of, a lot of behind-the-scenes research. I'm going to want to really look at something for a long time and examples of how it was done elsewhere. Part of my ideas on blight abatement, when I've been researching it, there's a lot of good papers out there by the Urban Institute, several other entities like that on how blight abatement has worked really well in other cities of similar population. But that's, that's how I would work with others.
What are your personal core values?
Individual responsibility. I describe myself as a libertarian, which would typically be in free minds, free markets, a very much Madison-Jefferson constitutionalist type approach to things. I think most individual people generally should be left alone by government. Unless what they're doing is, is harmful to an innocent neighbor or other person.
Do you know your win number?
What do you mean by win number?
Okay, the number, that would be the number of votes that the last winning candidate for your position won by plus one. So if they got 480 votes and won, then your win number would be 481.
I, I can't remember the win number. I know I looked at it. And I didn't think too much about the win number. If I recall correctly, the current office holder was unopposed. So it was, it was kind of hard to judge that number. So no, I don't know the win number. I'll have to find that out.
He was unopposed.
It's in my notes.
He was unopposed in the primary, but he did have a general.
Okay.
He did have an opponent in the general.
Yeah, I do recall it being fairly close.
It was, I think, six votes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How often have you, how often have you attended Parkersburg City Council meetings as a citizen?
About 12. When I first started thinking about this, when I married my wife Rachel, I got to meet a lot of people. When she was sworn in after the last election, I became acquainted with the sheriff and all the different magistrates, several of the judges. And in general conversations, without naming specific city, county, state office holders, I was encouraged to run. They felt my ideas and my demeanor was better than the current council person. I think a lot of that had to do with age and experience. I guess that's.
How have you kept up with the happenings at city council when you, when you weren't in attendance?
Facebook, YouTube, word of mouth. I've had several conversations with other council members, a few bankers and other people, county commissioners, to sort of lay in the know, I'm still interested and here's what I intend to do and do they still like the idea? And yeah, that's it.
Parkersburg has a strong mayor form of city government. What do you see the role of city council being in that particular government?
Strong mayors are good, especially if they're good administrators. Because I never look at a mayor of a town like Parkersburg as a necessarily a policy setter, but a policy, get the job done, you know, hire the right people, motivate the people, make everything coordinated. I've lived in a lot of cities and a lot of states and I was very, very pleased when I moved here. The streets are nice. The trash is picked up on time and well. The water tastes good. Generally pleased. So as, as long as the mayor is a really good administrator and, and basically a CEO. So the city council is sort of like a board of directors. And Parkersburg is a corporation, most cities are. So the council's the board of directors. Mayor's the CEO, there's a CFO, there's the general counsel. And it's good.
What do you think you will enjoy the least about serving if you're elected?
If any particular thing. I, I can't think of anything right now. I mean, having not been involved in government before, nothing comes to mind. But some people might think that that's not a strength. But sometimes the person from afar can see things that people who are right in the mix don't see. Not just a fresh perspective, but you can kind of see who, who has been perhaps not getting along for a long time and have maybe helped mitigate that circumstance.
So on the flip side, what excites you the most about serving on city council if you're elected?
If I can help get the blight mitigation to happen faster and smoother and more economically. Getting the ratio of good housing to the actual ratio, to the actual number of people. Because right now it's way out of whack. There's way too many buildings with a number of populous and the age of populous. The closer and faster that gets into balance, the sooner property tax values go up instead of down. The sooner neighborhoods become more stable. The sooner people look at District 4 as a nice community, the way it used to be back, say, 50 years ago. I think that'd be the one thing would be. Yeah, that's about that.
As a citizen of Parkersburg, tell us what you're most proud about, about our city.
I like the city in general overall. It's, you know, most of my life was spent as a child in rural Washington County, near Marietta. And as most of my adult life was in Columbus. And Parkersburg is almost like a mini Columbus. It's, it's blighted neighborhoods, it's good neighborhoods, and it's, it's retail and office are just so scrunch together. I just see that it has a lot of potential and it could change fairly rapidly with a few changes and with perhaps a little bit more motivation. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, when I, when I came here, I kept hearing people in Parkersburg say they didn't like Parkersburg. It was, the streets were all crooked, it was all hard to get around, but it's actually interesting. And even some of the blighted areas are kind of fantastic. There's an interesting house over on Oak Street with some bizarre signs in the yard that are absolutely kind of artistic. It's, it's just, it's, from an outsider's view, it's kind of cool.
With that, we'll move into our hot seat. One or the other of us, mostly both, have been present at nearly every single city council meeting the past several years since the current city council was sworn in. We've noticed that a lot of what the council does is routine and not of much interest to the public. We've also noticed that a lot of the issues that come up in council are not controversial and are resolved by unanimous or nearly unanimous vote.
But there have been a number of hot-button issues that got a lot of interest from the public or that divided city council. So we want to take a few minutes and run through those and get your quick take on them. Now, most of them have been resolved for the moment, but they can always come back up. Hence, we thought we're interested in hearing what your views on them are.
Okay.
So for this purpose, we'll use a support, not support, or support with changes. Here we go. The non-discrimination ordinance.
Generally, support. I can't see too many changes there. Most of that's already in, in all federal and state laws already. It's perhaps it was a reinforcement of existing law.
Motorized bicycle ban.
Who would be against that? I think one of the cool things about Parkersburg is the, what I, my research has found, they're called China Girl bikes because they're mostly made with little Chinese engines. I kind of see that as a way of Parkersburg setting itself apart, making it a thing, perhaps even an organized club with rules and shows and being in parades. So.
Raising city fees for trash collection, fire, and police protection.
Support with some changes. It seems like the budgets are fairly well-balanced and fairly well-spent by the different departments. I know my, like I say, my trash is picked up on time and well, and there's never a mess. I do, I do wonder on fees that are charged to, my understanding currently is that Vienna uses Parkersburg water and sewer. I don't know if that's correct or not.
I am not sure.
I could see Vienna's price going up.
Okay, financial support for Parkersburg homecoming and other civic events.
Generally, support. Thing about events like that is that if people want to go, they'll go. There should be a way for people to, to pay or buy tickets more. I'm not sure exactly how that would work. I'm not a, I'm not a good event coordinator or planner.
A fireworks ban.
By that you mean fireworks by individuals?
Yeah.
No, I don't see the need for a ban. I'm almost 60 years old. I've used fireworks since I was five and it doesn't take long to learn how to do it right. So generally, I think the vast majority of people are responsible and should be left to enjoy their lives.
Splash pad project.
I thought that was a bit of an overspend and probably could have been spent elsewhere. I don't think it's opening with COVID currently. We are talking about.
Remains to be seen.
We're talking about the City Park Project, correct?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, I'm, I just, I didn't see the point of that. I thought it could be used elsewhere.
A social media or code of conduct policy for council members?
And I would be generally against a policy requiring someone to say certain speech or not say certain speech. If you say something that a lot of people disagree with, what's nice about Facebook and social media is you can get immediate pushback. You'll know that you've said the wrong thing in the wrong way. And you, you should learn from that and not do it again. So generally, free speech is good speech.
Dumpster fencing and cleanup.
As, as in a rule that someone who has a dumpster has to keep it fenced and clean?
Yeah.
I agree with the clean part. I don't agree with the fencing. That can put a too large of an expense on a small business and it kind of makes it harder to clean around the dumpster. And there's dumpster divers. It's hard to stop them.
Residential property cleanup.
Looks like we've frozen.
That'd be part of blight abatement. So I generally support it. I don't think the fines for having distressed property are high enough and they don't accelerate quick enough. So support property cleanup.
With that, we'll move into our love card section. So that was the gauntlet. You've made it through. These are pretty easy softball questions. What's your favorite thing or place in our city?
Honestly, it's my own home. When we bought the house, it, it had never been finished. It was a, it was just a raw shell. And my wife and I have personally finished most of it ourselves. And most of the cabinets we redid ourselves. And like I said before, all of the molding and trim and furniture came from Restore or other places in town. And it's a very comfortable place to be and where we enjoy our lives. We're doing serious landscaping this year, so. Generally, all around Parkersburg is, you know, some jazz at the Blenny every now and then. And I don't want to name any.
What do you like to do in your off time?
I don't have a lot of off time. It's more around continue remodeling our house and gardening and landscaping. My wife and also, I also have a hobby of doing a bit of thrifting and eBaying. We enjoy that quite a bit. That's, that's about it, fairly boring.
So two-part question. What are you personally passionate about and what is most unique about you?
I'm not particularly passionate about any one thing. I like intellectual pursuits. Being an entrepreneur, you, you tend to enjoy getting in. Being an entrepreneur, you, you, you tend to enjoy getting in and doing the work hands-on. I really can't narrow it down to one thing. I've got a broad array of things I'm really interested in and like doing.
Well, Brett, we appreciate you taking the time to interview with us. And I'm sorry, Jen, I cut you off. You go ahead.
It's okay. This is the time when we give you the floor to let us know anything that you feel like we've missed or that voters need to know about you or your campaign, how to get in touch with you, how to find your campaign information, whether that's Facebook or internet or by email, how they donate or get involved, et cetera.
Okay, your screen is frozen, so we'll see if this comes through. I have a Facebook page that's Brett A. Bren Gardner. Being an entrepreneur for a long, long time and part of that time being in the computer and internet and web design industry, part of the startup and entrepreneurial community in Athens and Columbus. If you Google my name, you'll find probably ten or twelve pages. Even a site that Amazon owns lists every book I've ever read. So if you, if you're interested, you can find out everything you need to know.
Great.
I'm not saying it's going to be interesting, but
All right. Well, Brett, we really appreciate you taking the time to talk with us this afternoon and help voters get better acquainted with you. We enjoyed having you. Everyone, remember, wash your hands. And thank you, Brett.
Thanks. Appreciate it.